I'll call this public hearing to order. This is the second public hearing on the taxpayer bill of rights regarding the tenings for millage rate for Harris County for the coming year. We've advertised this as required in the newspaper. We are to have three public hearings. This is the second. The first one was this morning. The third one will be two weeks from tonight at the regular commission meeting where we will then set the millage rate. I want to make just a few comments in the beginning that may help answer some questions and may let you know kind of where we are at this point in time. Couple of questions this morning where is this a done deal? No, it is not a done deal. That's why we're having public hearings to listen to what you have to say so that we can consider that. It is, what we are proposing is how we balance the budget and I'll kind of give you that input. I will say that we have just a half an hour right now before the regular meeting takes place. However, we will have to suspend this meeting for our regular session and then if there are any that have not been heard from that still wish to say something, we will then start this public hearing again at the conclusion of the.
Is it possible to delay the regular meeting? Is that an order?
I think you can call the meeting to order, recess it, and then you can recess this one, call the regular meeting to order, recess it, and then call this one back to order.
Until 7:30 and we do have a public hearing then we would have to stop. We shouldn't last long. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Ms. Manes, for the question. As has been reported in the newspaper, we are considering a millage rate increase. It will be the first increase since 2002. Our current millage rate is the same as it was in 1992. We have gone up once or twice in the interim and then the last time I say it was 2002 and we have gone down a couple of times. And our current millage rate is 6.14. The proposed millage rate increase is 2.5 mils, which still leaves us on county operations side lower than all of our neighboring contiguous counties. This is not something the board commissioners takes lightly. We have tried hard to find a way around doing this, but given the situation, circumstances we're in, there is, we don't feel there's any other way. The last couple of years, we've been able to find some funds and pull things out kind of toward the end. We have not been able to pull the rabbit out of the hat this year. Our current millage rate is 6.14 and as county maintenance and operations. The school board is 17.91 plus a 0.65 for school bond indebtedness to reach a total millage of 27.2, which is all in one bill. As it now stands, Harris County's operations side of your total taxes is only 24 percent. Obviously with a 2.5 mil increase, it will get up, it will increase somewhat, but maybe only to about a third of the total budget, a little less than a third. What we've done in coming up with, and Randy Dowling, who's been our county manager now for about seven, eight months, Randy has come in and with all of his experience in the past, has been able to identify some areas that where we function. It is, it was not easy. We didn't have the best in the way of financial leadership for about three years, which has kind of led to this. To balance the proposed budget, we have taken from some of our enterprise funds several million dollars out of the water department, out of solid waste, out of the jail fund, and out of the county's general fund. We did talk about what kind of millage increase we need. To be very transparent to all of you, we could certainly have considered and looked at and did look at millage rates less than a 1.5 mil, less than a 2.5 mil increase. However, if we did that, we would have to continue to draw from our fund balances in those other accounts, and we have peeled them down fairly low at this point in time. So if we went another year, we might well exhaust those funds and then Harris County would have no cushion to fall back on. You know, when the recession hit 13, 14 years ago, there were a number of counties in the state of Georgia who almost went bankrupt. They weren't sure they were even going to be able to pay their employees from week, month to month. Harris County does not want to do that. We, and as we talked about later, our fund balance has dwindled over the last three years, two of which we, or three of which we know the exact amount has gone down. And the audit for the fiscal year just ended, June 30th. We won't have that for the year end, but we do know that it went down probably two, three more million dollars. So we don't want to be in a position where we've got nothing to fall back on for any kind of emergency situation that comes up. And if we were to have another recession, we need to be able to operate. Some of the things behind the budget that bring us to do this are, number one, we, and many, many of the citizens of this county ask us to do this. We have added four new full-time deputy sheriff positions. We have added only four officers controlling per shift for a number of years now. Matter of fact, I think as part of this one, we have not added deputies as far as new slots since 2002, or 12 years, I believe it was, 12 years since we've added deputies. This is a big county. Right now, we've got four deputies per shift. That's all controlling this entire county. So this would add a fifth one. We do have a next-generation 911 system that has to replace outdated equipment and the system that now exists. That is going to be an expensive proposition. We've already started, already had the bids on the one portion of it, a couple more portions to go. But at the end of this year, the system that we now have would no longer be supported. That doesn't mean it wouldn't function, but it would not function fully as it needs to for the safety of our citizens. So that is something that we need to do. That is one of the things, and I think you'll find this in what I'm getting ready to say. We are trying to have the citizens of this county be able to rest easy when they've got communications that are available so that if they unfortunately have to pick up and make a 911 call, or a house is on fire or something, that they can, it can be reached and it can be taken care of. We are increasing the stipend for the volunteer fire departments. We are purchasing and installing a new funded accounting software package. We have, one that we have has not been supported for a number of years, and we have two people lately who we've been able to call to come in and help us on occasion, but it's not even done for government on software and does not meet the required state of Georgia charter accounts. So that is being all pulled together. There are debt payments to the community centers as part of this. The establishment of a GIS system, which will support many of the county operations, including 911, community development, tax assessors, sheriff's office, public works, and a lot of the other county departments. We have never had a countywide information technology department. We have 257 employees right now. Most of those employees have computers that they need to utilize in their job. We're currently using a person out of Columbus, and that person does his best to get them in need, but sometimes we've had to wait four and five working days to get that person up here. And in the interim, we have an employee that's sitting there not being able to do the job that they are being paid to do. That basically is a wash because we're paying that person now by having our own IT system that is pretty much the same as what we're paying now, but we will have somebody that is available right here on our staff. Improvements to the jail, improvements to the prison. We have analog camera systems right now that protect our officers. We're going to have to upgrade to digital. It's just something we need for the safety of prisoners or the employees and for the county. We are reauthorizing a full-time appraisal position that was inadvertently dropped out last year. That is going to happen. We'll be purchasing equipment for the vehicle maintenance department, which maintains all of our county vehicles. And these would be a couple of pieces of equipment that just absolutely have to be there for us to do that job as opposed to taking them out of service and sending them to Columbus or somewhere else. There is in this budget a 2 percent raise for all of our employees. Roughly, the cost of living is about a 1.5 percent increase. So by going up two, we're giving them a little bit of a boost there. And we're also footing the bill for the increase in employee healthcare costs. We know the county employees aren't paid the best in the world, and we try and help them wherever we can. Those are some of the deals. Our property tax digest, that has not changed substantially over the last three or four years. It's been pretty flat. So that has led to some of our, I guess, lack of tax dollars available. Another big thing that has come about in the last few years is the increase in conservation easements. A lot of our citizens have property that they could put under a conservation easement. That conservation easement has first conditions with it, but they're willing to do that. It details what they can and cannot do with their property. Those conservation easements though reduce the valuation and the taxes on that property to the tune of, I don't know, it's several million dollars that has come out of what we used to get tax-wise. So that's a part of it. We're also in the process, those of you who bought a new vehicle, you know now that when you buy that, you have to pay a one-time tax for several years, add the loan tax in addition to the sales tax. That's a change from the yearly one that you have to do. Those who still have cars that they had several years ago, still have to go in every year and do that. But the others have to pay at one time, and then that's it. So those dollars are two different, two different pools of dollars. The new one is a T A B T tax. So there's a little bit of disjoint in those two just for a short-term period and then everybody will be on the same page. So those are some of the things. We certainly appreciate all of you being here tonight. We want to hear what you have to say. When we call, we call on you. You will have five minutes. I'll try and let you know when you're about to run out of that to talk. Certainly, we need to, we want to hear from each and every one of you who wishes to speak so that we will know what your concerns are. I will close out by saying, again, this is not something the commissioners want to do. We just, we have not raised taxes at all since 2002, and it's the same as it was in But that's a good thing and it's a bad thing. Bad thing because now we're having to do that, and it hurts you and it hurts us to have to do it. It, in no way says that you shouldn't make your comments known. We want to hear them, or we want to listen to them. If somebody comes up with a tool, that would be wonderful. We would love to hear it. But I guess other than that, any other commissioners wish to make?
I would just like to say that, well, we have time for free speakers, so I'd like to get on with it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So with that, then I will, who wishes to come forward and speak at this point in time? Ask any questions, or when you do come forward, just take your name and address.
And because of the microphone system, there's always two things that people don't tend to speak loud enough into the microphone that people can hear them so everybody else doesn't hear.
I'll speak as loudly as I can. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, just pull it up close to you, that helps.
My name is Carolyn Merrily. I live at 44 Tree in Forsen, Georgia. I'm a Realtor. And I'm curious, and perhaps I haven't been involved enough with this process, and it probably is true, why we don't have these outlined in some type of documentation so that people can see it as opposed to?
The entire budget and our leading agendas are posted on the website. HarrisCountyGA.com.
That's where I focus.
Dot com.
Yeah, that's where I focus for all the areas.
And that's where it is.
And I just, I'm curious as to the cost of these different items. That's not been tested. And how important is that each one of these be implemented?
A lot of other uses that we could find dollars for, these are the ones that we feel are the most important.
Okay. Is there any way that I can get some kind of, that we as citizens can get a write-down as to the cost of these different items?
I think a lot of that is on the website, and in each department's budget.
All I pulled up was this.
Okay, well, it's 140 pages.
Well, I was going to print 140 pages.
You can go to the departments that you're interested in or where there's a big thing and you can see what you should be able to see. And if you can't find it, county manager is available.
Right. I've not met you before, but I'm sure I will. I am curious about one thing. The reauthorization of full-time appraiser position, is that a licensed appraiser? And what does this thing mandate? And the reason I'm asking this, because we're having issues with tenant fees in Columbus. So that's one of the things that I'm really tuning into, is it a licensed appraiser? What is it that appraiser position?
Wayne, do you hire a licensed appraiser? As far as what you're probably considering, which is a fee appraiser, typically not. When we say a licensed appraiser, what it is, is certified by the state of Georgia. They go to classes, have to get so many hours, take examinations, and have to learn to do the massive appraising process versus the fee appraising.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Sorry. I've been a Realtor for 39 years, so this has really been a pretty eye-opening experience in Columbus. And the 24 percent increase in employee healthcare costs, was that negotiated at all or before?
We negotiated it as best we can, but our insurance carrier comes to us with a quote, and we, I believe Randy did negotiate that down somewhat this year. I think they were asking for 23 percent or something like that.
Exactly.
Yeah. And a lot of it is based on history, county's payment history that the insurance companies have to make. But healthcare in general has gone up everywhere.
I'm self-employed. I understand. I understand. All right. So I need to get with the different departments, is that correct, to get the numbers?
No. Look at it online. And then if the numbers are not there, you have questions.
For example, the tax assessor position. That's the tax assessor department.
Right.
So I'm paid 74 of the budget. That's online. You'll see that that tax appraiser position is a total of salary and benefits of little over $46,000. So in each particular department, you'll find those little nuggets of information.
And even though it's 140 pages, it's very easy to navigate because it's.
I hope it's larger than this print.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Merrily. Appreciate your time. Next.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is William Hean. I represent my mother, just behind me. We've been in this program for 42 years now. Both of us are disabled, and you know, it was one fixed income. I don't see how, our income hasn't increased. I don't know how much we can keep paying in taxes. And I understand all of these are just important to the other expenses here that carry. I just ask, how long will this keep going up?
How long, what?
I mean, the taxes.
Keep going up?
We have a fixed income.
Yeah. Two and a half mils is the, is the number that we feel that if we go up to that, and the budget was built on that, that if we went up that much, and we don't have any real surprises this year in the way of cost, that we should not have to go up the following year, and who knows after that, probably not. If we do less than that, less than the 2.5 mils, in all probability, we will have to go up next year. If we were to do less, then that would mean we had to pull more out of the fund balances than we already were pulling out, which would then put that even more critical in my being that the increase would be a little bit more because of that.
I understand, you're going to sit an hour outside of it.
I think you see a bunch of silver hairs up here, and a lot of us have a fixed income also. It does, I understand, we all understand that it's not something that we want to do.
Mr. Hean, Mr. Hean, I'm sorry, and I apologize with my voice. I have only one working vocal cord. If you can't hear me, let me know. Where do you live?
Also, 75 County Road, Brad. That's the spur of course.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name is Lisa Culpepper. I don't know if I need the mic, but I'm here. I noticed while I go, just my main concern is the insurance. I don't know why, at this point in time, we are still under like Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Why are we not self-funding now? We started talking about this before Danny Eber left office. While ago, you said they came in at a 23 percent increase this year from Blue Cross Blue Shield? I must not have the right stuff that I did open records, because this said they came in at 19.97. So when I got open records, did I get, did y'all go with option B? Because that's the one that I got.
I don't.
That's the one that went from last year of 1.482, might as well say 1.5 million, to this year 1.7, right? Might as well say 1.8 because it's 774,000. If you continue to be fully insured with anybody, you're going to see these rate increases every single year. Four years ago, when Danny, before Danny ever left the office, we started talking about self-funding. Does anybody know what self-funding is? Okay. When you've got self-funding, with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, you can look for this increase every single year. They are a nonprofit organization, and they don't give two hoops about you or Harris County. All they've got is the bottom line. And until you start taking an active approach to it, I don't know of anybody in this room, is there anybody in this room that goes and buys a car and doesn't negotiate?
No.
I mean, you have to negotiate this stuff, and you have to be serious about your negotiations. At this rate, we'll be bailing y'all out in another two or three years. If you don't start controlling your spending and taking care of your spending now, then we'll be back in here two or three years from now.
Exactly correct.
So we've got to do this. You guys have got to put your thinking caps on, find other alternatives besides just taking something that's handed to you and then negotiating down a mere 2 percent. And I know some of you were in the self-funding meetings when we started having those years ago. So, you know, do we have a strategy? Do we have a strategy in place? We've got 11 months before renewal again. So will anybody start thinking about it now, or we're going to be back in here next year? And I assure you, next year, we'll be over $2 million a year.
We have personnel in place who are looking at that. We're looking at that very much. Self-funding, we did take a look at it a few years ago, and it was not the best option for us at that time. That doesn't mean it can't change, and so we will always, we will look at those things. I appreciate that.
Actually, at that time, it would have cost more.
Sometimes it does cost a little bit initially, but in the long run, for what y'all have paid over the past four years for increases, you would have well seen your investment.
And it was given out to bid, and Blue Cross Blue Shield was the only organization that cared to bid, and that's classic in this country now because with Obamacare, everything has changed. And 20 percent is relatively minor for medical costs to go on, and two, insurance has gone up. You know, there were states where it's gone up 100 percent, 40 percent, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Thank you for your comments. We'll be real certain we'll be looking at another option.
I hope so.
Next individual.
My name is Melinda Messick, and I live in 578 Heinewood Way in Catawba. I'm sorry, keep going. Could you hang it? Melinda Messick?
My name is Melinda Messick.
I live in 578 Heinewood Way in Catawba. Obviously, I'm not nearly as well-versed in this as you are, so you'll have to forgive me if these are stupid questions, but.
We're having some bugs out there so they can't hear us.
Okay. I'm not used to microphones. All right. So the first thing is, it appears that one of the largest increased expenses is this 911 thing. So that's a one-time expense, isn't it?
Basically, yes. And then, of course, is the maintenance there. But basically, it's a one-time expense, yes.
So if it's a one-time expense, it does seem like our taxes don't need to, because if you raise them, then they stay raised. So the next year, when that expense is no longer there, you've still got our money. So.
Theoretically, that's true. Yes, we will take a look at it. We are still working on that system, so we don't know the final cost of it yet.
Okay. Are there others of these expenses that are one-time?
Financial support. Financial support.
Okay. Because it seems like some of those could be offset by deferring by one year than some of these other things, which are well of good, just so that we don't end up raising our taxes when they really didn't need, you know, like I feel like.
I had the opinion during our budget meetings that there are some of these costs that could be postponed. That is my take, and I would give.
And I mean, postponing becomes hard, because I'm sure there's other things that you want to do with postponing as well already that we don't know about, but because we know some of these expenses are one-time, it's, that seems to make sense. The other thing, I'm just wondering, debt payments for the community center. Now, we must have had those every, I don't understand why they're something that's.
Part of it was, up until then, it's been covered out of splosh of funds. There's a certain dollar out of splosh of funds, and then we're out of that.
Okay. I mean, I don't, not that I want to advocate this, because I go to the community center and I love to tell people how inexpensive it is, but, I mean, you could raise the rates on it. It's really a bargain.
Yes, it is. We need to market that better and have more members.
Well, that would help too.
Yes.
Okay. And then, I know I'm here a couple of years late, but why do we need a new library?
The library was our cart just busted in seams. This new library is about three times larger than it ever. All of our programs in the library were growing each year.
So it's mostly because of programs then, not? So, it's mostly because of programs then, not because of materials? Because people are writing lots and lots of physical books?
Yes, that's correct. With materials, the Friendsville Library does an awful lot. The state does some, so we just needed a newer and better facility. And to answer some of them, we need more computer, because that's more in the digital age. Fifty, fifty computers.
Yeah, I mean...
And we're not paying, let me make sure, we are not paying for the library. Two million dollars came from the state. Two million dollars came out of splosh, it's coming out of splosh, and then we have, we're raising private funds for another million and a half to pay for the library.
So, I'm sure I saw the library listed on something, though.
You may have seen utilities and personnel in there.
I see those are the two, we're filling it for efficiency or whatever.
The library thing, the library system pays for a lot of that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If you, just a moment. When you talk about that being a one-time expense, there was also a million dollars in one-time expenses that we did not do this year. And that is about how many, you know, these other things that have... You know, every year, you have, you know, in two, I can't remember. In the next two years, we have spent $65,000 just for a new computer system for the Sheriff's Department. You know, all those expenses, you have a lot of expenses come in every year, you know, beyond that.
Mr. Dowling did a cut to initially, before he brought it to the Commissioners, and cut out three to four million dollars of requested expenses from the carpet, so...
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think you need to recess this meeting. Call the regular meeting to order, immediately recess it, and then go back and reconvene this meeting, and then you can go until 7:30.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion then to recess this public hearing. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor of a motion to recess, motion carries. Okay, so, we will recess, we are now recessed this meeting. And I guess we need then to call the regular meeting to order.
Take a motion to recess it.
Which I will do, have the regular meeting to order. And then, we entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting until 7:30. There we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? In favor, sit down, raise your hand. All right, that carries.
Now, you can recall it.
So, now, we will go back into a public hearing on this. So, next speaker. See your hand back in the bag.
Thank you for having me. Harry Banister, 1082 Kenan Road, Fortson, Georgia. Just like earlier, you recommended going to the Harris County website to look at the information related to this property increase. How is it that many people in the Harris County are to go to the website when we can't get internet access throughout many parts of Harris County? That, to me, is a very big concern. One that I know is trying to be addressed in a lot of different areas, through point broadband, other carriers and so forth, but my question to the council is, what is being done from a council's perspective to try and assist in bringing in a service provider to Harris County?
To give you a short answer, we are looking at that, and we already have begun some work with it. You know, it's rather detailed. We know it is a concern. Actually, part of the library is going to have a hotspot. That's not our, we have answered it, but it was just another one. It will have a hotspot that's near 24/7 from outdoors, in a covered outdoor area of the library. To do that, we are very concerned about broadband and are looking at ways to do that. We've already run some fiber optic cable to handle the core here of our business operations, and we will be expanding that to base more available.
But that is addressing it from a county government perspective, in saying that it's going to be at the library with the hotspot and being expanded within, to the Harris County use here within the unit. I'm talking about the residents of Harris County.
That's what I'm saying.
Actually, I've been working on it for 15 years. They approached everybody, you can, basically, the landline, the fiber optic people, go and put the fiber optic where they want, when they want to. And sometimes it won't, I know in one case, Mayor Pitermount had to pay extra money because his mother's, mother-in-law's house was 150 feet from the road rather than 100.
Charter cable wanted $21,000 for me to run it at a mile.
And that's their game. It is a national problem. I have talked to the Secretary of Agriculture about it. That is one of his major goals this year. I am attending the meeting tomorrow about that it'll be on the sub, brought up. I mean, it is not a Harris County problem, it is not a Georgia problem, it is a national problem with rural communities. And everybody's trying to get, do what they can. Large part of the problem is the technology just hasn't reached the point where you can get good, reliable, you know, internet. You know, I pay almost $300 for what I get, and it's questionable at times.
We are concerned.
I mean, it's a major concern for Harris County with so many Ramona boys.
I don't want you to feel we're just addressing county issues, because part of solving the county issues is also going to provide some infrastructure that we hope to be able to branch out and get to the general populace.
Last point to bring me up is on the overall tax increase. Look, I understand where you're coming from and the need for having the increase. I understand completely. But the one thing that I ask of each of you as county commissioners is, as items come up, such as community center, you know, it wasn't really needed. And as other projects come up, the question is, can we sustain any projects that are long-term pulls on the revenue that's coming into the county? Look at that as a decision, not just in what it is at this moment, but from a long-term pull on the revenue. That is a huge concern.
I agree.
Thank you.
We're going to do that. Next speaker.
Yes, sir.
My name is Wallace Mosley. I live in Cary, Rhode Island, near Ellisland. I've been retired here since 1994. I've built and bought four houses in Harris County. I think personally, for me, I think the 10% increase is very high. Out of 15 proposals to spend money, I would have rather seen you prioritize the top eight bill one year and carry the rest of it until the next year, so we wouldn't have to have such a substantial increase. I also see a few things on there that I personally have a question about. For those of us that are retired, military retirees, social security retirees, this year, 2017, we got a 0.43% increase in coal. I fail to see why you get a 2% when you've got the same low inflation factor that we got. I think you should reconsider that, the same way we got.
That is really misstated as being a 2% coal.
Yes.
2% is the amount of raise that we have voted to give to the employees. One and a half percent of that was coal based on their job classifications.
That's still our priority.
County employees are paid pretty poorly in the workplace.
I understand that, but our military retirees sometimes are too. So, we're on 2%.
Most of the bus are also retired.
We got 0.3%. I fail to see how you get more than that.
I understand.
I think you should have carried some of these 15 proposals over to next year and not sought out for the 10% increase this year. I used to prioritize my shipment when I was in business, and I dealt a lot of buildings and so forth, but I never tried to get them all done in one year.
If I may say, we've not. This is what, after prioritizing and deleting several million dollars, this is what's left. And most of these are things that, if we don't do them this year, for example, the 911 system, then it's not going to be supported, it's not going to be able to be maintained. And who, you know, that's what the job of the county is, is to protect the citizens. It's 911 system, we're trying to get a good one that's going to last for a long number of years, like the past one, but things wear out, technology becomes outdated. That's just one example. But this is after things have been trimmed and many, many hours just meeting together in addition to what we've all done separately and investigated. But this is not, gee, this is what we want to do. This is what we've got to do. We tried to distinguish, like you said, distinguish what we've got to do and what you'd like to do, and you don't do just what you want to do. We do understand, and we try hard. But with the funds that are available, even with a 2.5 mil increase, we're still having to pull additional funds from these revenue accounts like solid waste and the works, things like that. So, this isn't even taking care of all that, and that's what we want to be sure of, that we don't deplete these other funds. It would be afraid how much, how many mils that we take if we really did use just taxes for that. And there are many other sources of revenue, not just taxes, that come in. And those being utilized to the maximum, grants are available, and other funding, we try to take advantage of that. But I assure you, it's not likely that we've made a decision, but this is what we're trimmed down to.
The two biggest things that irritate me when I get my tax notice is that 66% of my taxes for property is for schools, and I've never had any children or grandchildren in school.
I'm going to be there, I don't need them, but if they work with their taxes...
And seniors should be actually getting a break on school tax.
And there are some tax breaks, but it's not something that we can do, it's something under state law that is available to certain citizens who do qualify, and those go to the tax assessor's office.
And 2%, I don't think you should get a higher cost of living than our social security people and our military people.
Thanks, sir.
Hi, I'm John Griffin, 262 Menon Lane, Ellisville, Georgia. I'm also the HLA president for Ellisville Place. Couple of comments. I understand where the money's going for the schools, but I have a problem. My son graduated last year. We're very active, he was involved in sports. But in addition to what the county was giving, it was requiring, on average, 25 to 30 parents, six to eight hours a week to supplement, to do the things that they needed, to have safe sports environments to participate on. And when it comes to baseball, it's even more. So, just would like for us to kind of think about, in your engagement, and we've engaged the school board and others, we know a lot of the money has to go for textbooks and things, but it became really excessive when you have 40, 50 parents, eight, 10 hours a day, trying to do things to make the ball feel safe, to build things that perhaps those funds should go to, so I just ask you to consider that. We do it because our kids are there, but it is a county school. Second thing, just to kind of put some things in perspective, when I give my report to Ellisville Place HLA, we talk 2.5 mils, 1.5, whatever. All they want to know is, what's the bottom line?
That's it.
Of how much money their tax is going to increase? And so, can you help me in that if the average house in Ellisville Place is about $225,000, what is the average increase that they can expect on their tax?
$225.
$225.
It's a rough number, that's what it comes out to.
Okay, so, I mean, because that's the bottom line, I mean, when you get hung up on percentages, that's all well and good, but, you know, just kind of give me a bottom line. So, $225 is what the average increase I can tell Ellisville Place residents that they're going to have to pay.
That's correct.
Thank you, Harry.
Mr. Griffin, thank you understanding that, because I have this question. The school board, of course, sets their own rules, right?
Sure, sure.
And we just collect it?
Well, I know you do. I just bring it up because there ought to be an oversight. And if I'm paying a big portion to there, I'm spending a lot of hours. In fact, I put in 250 volunteer hours, and I was low last year. And so, I mean, it's just for, so there ought to be an oversight, is all I'm saying.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate what you did. I will let you know that I've talked to the school board, and I've talked to the school superintendent, and is there anything you can do to help the seniors who more than any others are on a fixed income? I have gotten no response, obviously. At least, at least we tried, and I still kind of turn that every time I get a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker. Anyone else wish to make any comments or ask any questions?
My name is Jan Underdowen. I live at 68 Little Bear Drive in Catawba. Jan Underdowen, U-N-D-E-R-D-O-W-N. And I'd kind of like to know, except for the increase, which is overall to everybody and never goes down, are there any other measures as a county that we can ask the residents to pay for, to pay for these one-time things like 911? Is there any other means to get the same revenue, but make it a one-time splosh, a one-time fee? Because we ever go up, we never go down.
Well, that's not true, because we have reduced it a couple of times, but, yeah, I appreciate that. We do try and take capital items in the splosh, to try and put them in the splosh. We, our current splosh expires in 1919.
1919.
So, we are, this next year, going to try and extend that splosh, and it will have some capital items in it that we try and put on.
Why couldn't some of these be in that?
Some of, well, some of what is in here that did not come before you are things that were in it. And there were some things in here that we didn't know about quite right, and not been communicated to us.
Could we reconsider that before we do a blanket increase? Because you really are, I mean, that sounds like $225 is not a lot, but a lot of these people are on very fixed incomes.
To some people, it is.
It is a huge amount to them. And could you consider, you know, doing it through a splosh or another way to where the community could get involved to raise those funds?
I don't know, I think that's an interesting proposition. We'd have to look at whatever is being proposed. We certainly know that we need to increase our income stream, and we need more retail businesses in the county, which would help a great deal.
And we are looking at fee structures to see if we can, what our fee structures are, make sure that they're taking care of the expense of whatever item is in charge of the people. Too much corporate taxes is a way to raise revenue. The only thing in this list here that most likely should have been put in the splosh was the 911 system, but we can't wait for the next splosh to get this done. And so, that's one reason that's in this.
I mean, but is there anything else that we could do to raise it earlier without waiting for a splosh?
I don't know, we'll have to have some conversation about that to see. Trying to come up with different ways, but this, I appreciate that. Let's take a look at it.
Volunteer, volunteer, partner, all of these raise, a ton of them, and I think a lot of the residents would get behind if they knew specifically what they're paying to do. And if they could have some control over the military increasing so greatly, if they... do, and if they could have some control over the military increasing so greatly, if they would do some own volunteer to try to raise the money in this county for the needs.
Denise Sweney, 1149 Resumet Trail, Catalina. I guess I want to piggyback off what she said, is there no other way? Because 10% is a lot. No other way to raise money.
Help me understand the 10%.
Well, because really it kind of comes out to 10%. Yes, sir, or no? Okay, so let's call it 10. If I got a 10% raise, I would be completely happy with that. So 10% is a lot of money. I know there's things we need to fund as a county, and they look important, other than the park and the library, but everybody would have an opinion, but it's just a lot of money. Doesn't sound like much when it's 1 point something or 2 point something, but the fact of the matter is, is 10 point something percent.
It's not, it is not 10% of the total of tax bill. It's 10% of about 25% of your tax bill, because the rest of it is school board. So it's, I don't know if people are hearing that deliberately or not, but the increase right now, about 24% of the tax bill is going toward the county, and that's all that we're working on, and that's the only portion that we're proposing a village increase, not school.
So is the school board increasing?
Uh, no, sir, no way. The school board has not seen a need to increase their military this year. And that's, as of this year, that's about three quarters, a little over three quarters of what the total tax bill is.
Yeah, the, and just to make sure, 225,000, that's 0.1% increase in dollars.
Okay, so but is that 10% of the total tax bill?
No.
Somewhere I thought I saw that it would be.
I don't know.
10%. Which 10%, 10% is a lot. If it's a little bit of parts of the tax bill, it's one thing, but 10% of your total tax bill would be in that.
Yeah.
Because I think it's the total tax bill. Is that right? It's a 10%?
Yes.
Why is it 10% of that of your county tax, but not the total tax? So if your tax bill is $2,000, will it be 200, or will it be something? Your total, if your total is 200, that won't be 200.
Take off your school tax, it would be just the county tax, 10% of that county tax.
So it's 10% of the county tax. But piggybacking again on what she said, you know, is there no other way for the county to raise money? Or nothing optional that could kind of help to force on?
There are other ways that the county, there are other sources of income, and we're utilizing all of that, so like your car tags and things like that, fees for building fees and inspections and things like that, and utilizing, you know, all of those. But this is the only variable that we've got in these additional expenses, and since taxes have not been increased since 2002, they've been decreased since then, but we have the same village rate from 08 through 17. So, oh, so increase, we have increased, not just salaries, but anytime you purchase something, it's increased, it's increased, and that's what we, with this increase in village rate, hopefully, as these other costs continue to increase, we will have to keep doing everything we need, and we don't want to do that. We got to have a cushion, we don't know if an emergency is going to happen, we don't know if it's going to happen in the coming, and the responsibility to the citizens is to, you know, have a physically sound.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, I wouldn't argue, and I don't want to speak for everyone else here, but, you know, I understand budgets a little bit, and I understand that the county has needs, and we need things in the county, and it needs to operate, and be physically sound, but it just feels like a lot, all at once.
It does, but because we've been borrowing, taking from these other funds instead of increasing the taxes for several years, and those funds are just being depleted, so we can't go draw on those again. Actually, the taxes probably should have been increased in previous years, we got away with not doing it, we've got to do, we've got to do something now, because the funds are just not there, unfortunately.
Now, I mean, Harris County seems to have a lot of new growth and development everywhere. Driving down any road, new subdivisions, new homes, there's a lot, it looks like there's a lot more money coming, yeah.
But the values, you've got older homes too, the values go down, and with recession that we had, the values went down.
The taxes have stopped in. It's pretty flat.
It's been pretty flat now. Yeah, our digest over the last several years has been 90% for.
It's actually decreased, yeah.
Exactly.
I don't.
Time's up, but thank you very much, I appreciate it. Next speaker. Anyone else wish to make any comments? Yes, sir.
Just for, you'll be interrupted in about four minutes.
I don't think I'll take that long. Thanks for listening. My name is Roy Sacks. I live at 285 Road Wood Drive. My question is this, you keep saying taxes have not gone up. In 2001, my taxes were a thousand dollars, a thousand fifty dollars. This year, 1700. So.
Yeah, clarification, the county's village rate has not gone up. The school board has made a change. Theirs may have gone up, that will affect taxes, the values probably may have gone up, but the military by the county is what we're saying hasn't gone up.
Okay, I understand that. My point is, just like that young man right back there said, us guys on fixed income, it ain't going to keep going. I can't let you continue to have an open checkbook to buy things that we don't have to have. It's just, I, trust me, I'm a reader. I read probably two books a week, okay? I love library. But if we didn't have the money to build it, why did we start?
We haven't used county money to build it. We haven't used county taxpayer money to build it.
That's my point. If you didn't have the money to build it, you're taking, you're asking that you can increase. My money's going to pay for something somewhere in this county. If you did not have the money to build that without an increase, it shouldn't have been started.
That's what we're saying, there is no increase in that necessarily for the library fund. There'll be, yeah, there'll be a little, maybe another person to work in that, but any of the costs, any of the costs of building fixtures, anything like that, that is not being paid.
If it was on your list, where did you put money, right? Just like the board works, didn't you say you had to put money on board works?
No, not yet.
We took money out.
We took money out of board work.
Okay, fine. If you got money to pull out of there, that's fine. They get paid, like every one of us, every week. Okay, next speaker. Six, seven years ago, I don't remember how exactly when it was, we started talking about, arguing about the road, did we not? Where is it?
Ten years ago, 2007.
Where is it? That was the income stream that Ms. Andrews says, we've got to have this to build our schools. Where did that go?
I will tell you that. I am in constant contact with the CEO, the developer of the growth. I had a conversation with him yesterday, and there is nothing new to report. Personally, I don't think we'll see anything for several more years out of the growth.
So all of us guys out here that's on fixed income, we've got to give you a little bit, a little bit more of our money every month or every year, because that go through, because things are not happening as quickly as they should, like you done lady over here said. You drive up and down our streets, you see new settlements, so good, it's coming up everywhere. Where is that money?
That money is in there. Several years ago, we were building close to 450 new homes a year. Last year was the largest since then, and it was 100 and.
Thirty.
Hundred, hundred and somebody.
No, that's not what I'm going with.
The county not getting much, it's beginning to grow again.
That is my point. We are continuing, we have never stopped growing. People have been moving in this county from Columbus forever. So how are we all of a sudden in such a strapped for money, when we got people moving in every month? That's all I'm.
They require services. You know, they require services when they move in here, and, you know, we had a subdivision because of four of us, I guess a month ago, and I voted against that subdivision because we had just had our budget meetings where we were having trouble meeting the services of those of us who were here. And so my vote was against a new subdivision, because I think we need to stop that until we can meet our obligations with the citizens that are here. And so.
I understand.
Mr. Saxon.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe you live in the district that I represent.
I live.
I will share my opinion. I have said, and I've said on more than one occasion, that we need growth in this county, but we need commercial growth, we need retail growth, we need industrial growth, that we cannot continue to support this county on the backs of the home.
Okay.
We need, and we need a plan for that. And we need to build a continuous kind of road. We've been talking about growth for 10 years, nothing's happened. We need something, a revenue stream other than taxes all the problem.
I agree, I understand, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you can recess this meeting.
Okay.
And then reconvene your regular meeting.
We will hold the. We will recess this public hearing. We will hold the public hearing. Application of Blanche Mae Hudson to amend the tax zoning order, and when we're through with that, we will then come back to this. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a force tonight. We have a force tonight, application. Please be quiet, we have to continue this meeting. Thank you. It's an application for Hart Preserve Drive and Hart Ridge Court. No, sorry. This is, I'm going to just call this public hearing to order. I'm going to read the application, and the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case. I will then hear, we will then hear from individuals who are in favor of the application. When that has been finished, we will then hear for applicants in opposition to that application, which time then the applicant or his or her representative will have the opportunity to rebut any of the comments made and make any formal comments, and close the public hearing and take action. This is the application of Blanche Mae Hudson, 2005, Georgia Highway 208, Hamilton, to allow for personal care homes and assisted living facilities in the county. Currently, our definition reads, nursing home is a facility, health facility where persons are housed and furnished with meals and continued nursing care for compensation. The request for the amendment is to have it read nursing home, added personal care home and assisted living with the same definition, a health facility where persons are housed and furnished with meals and continued nursing care for compensation. It is part of Article Four, Section Two. It is permitted in matrix item number 112, which currently reads only in nursing home. Planning Commission has reviewed this and held a hearing, they recommended approval. The planning staff has also recommended approval. So that is the motion before us. It's Ms. Hudson or her representative here to make their case.
Apparently she wants to open such a facility, but the state won't issue a license unless our orders reading has that terminology of personal care home assisted living. They want just to take, they want just to nurse.
Mr. Chairman, is something that we can do without her?
Oh, yes, sir, it's to amend the ordinance.
Yeah.
You can amend it, as she requested or deny. What he does is just allow, actually expand the definition of nursing home, which now they could include personal care home and assisted living.
All right, so if she is not here to plead her case, are there any folks here that wish to speak in opposition to this request? Any wishing to speak in opposition? Are there any that wish to speak in support? Any wishing to speak in support? All right. I guess that will close the public hearing side of it, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we make the change to amend the ordinance.
All right, we got the motion and the second discussion. Any discussion on that?
Yes. There, it did come up before us, it's the same thing that it wasn't quite handled like this. Eight years ago, something like that, but, and that facility became available in Truap County, right across the county line by Mount. It has worked wonderfully. The only thing that concerns me is the safety of the individuals and how you define when a person, when it says continued nursing care, when they need to be removed out of assisted living, and because there have been assisted living facilities that are less than desirable, and put them into, you know, more direct care. And I just don't quite understand, I think that we need to better define that some way, and I don't quite understand how to do it.
As I understand it, the state regulates all this, we just have to.
Today is.
Yes, and they have to issue licenses for those. And also, the idea is that it will be in A1, R3, C1, C3, and C4 districts, and you will have to issue a special use permit, so they will come back to you, and you can see what the facility looks like, and what professional over the care, and they have the state licenses and that kind of thing.
I have a losing my problems, because I have trouble with them who live in the morning for the county, and it's very nice.
Any other discussion or comments on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by raising your hand. Carries your names. All right.
Mr. Chairman, you can now recess.
All right.
This meeting, you can go back to your special, you can make your special.
Now entertain a motion to.
Visiting.
I guess, well, I closed the public hearing, and we tend to vote, so now we need to recess the general meeting to go back to the budget.
I'll make that motion.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries.
We may reconvene the.
Right now, do I need a motion to reconvene?
You got it, you can convene without a motion.
Okay, good. All right, so we are now back in the regular session, which was budget discussion in the middle of hearing from citizens. Do we have someone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And the town Teal, I bet you know who it is.
Teal?
Teal, yes. 37, 38, Georgia Highway 219, Fortuna. You know me, Sam. Oh, I have one question. You heard the people out here around this area that want anything to do with. I don't know how the warning league went, but a few people I talked to, they're both saying the same thing. Oh, y'all listening to this, hearing it, or here, or this is a formality? You're gonna vote the way you want, or do you?
It is not a formality. Well, it's a formality in that it's dictated this is the way we have to proceed. Is it a done deal? No, sir, it is not a done deal. We are very much interested in what you, the citizens, have to say. We will be listening very carefully, and then we will have to make our deliberations, but that's why we will have three, have three public hearings. So that we can hear what the concerns are, and, and then we will include those in our deliberations.
I would say this, I would be for the addition of deputies, because we got a sheriff down in Columbus County, Sheriff's Department, and that would be a little bit more addition to it. They have the deputies out to ensure they're safe and a lot more too. With the other stuff, I think this should be filtered in over years and not just as far as the financing goes. This is the finance, people out here, you know, this is finance out here. I think that y'all need to consider that a lot more, because I'm one of the retirees and on the fixed income. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, it might be to, to share with this group when the vote is scheduled to be taken on the Capitol.
Okay, and the real great vote will be taken at our next commission meeting, which is August fifteenth. That will be the third, we will have the third hearing at that meeting and then the vote as to what we will do on the other.
I don't want to talk about this, but...
Seven o'clock.
That's when the public hearing, the last public session is on this, and then the kind of meeting afterwards. And we're going to have that meeting immediately after.
Is it part of the meeting? It's part of the meeting.
Is it part of the meeting following the first or second item on the agenda?
Seven o'clock is when the meeting starts, and then shortly after we start going down the agenda, it will be fairly near the top.
But the public hearing will be first?
Not necessarily.
Is it part of the meeting?
It's part of the meeting next time, because the vote will follow.
Oh, right, the vote follows, but it's...
Yeah, so we will have the public hearing. It may be seven fifteen or seven twenty, and we'll have a public hearing. And then when we close the public hearing, then we will vote.
Thanks.
And entertain a motion. Okay. Next individual. Anyone else?
Question, may I come back up and ask a question?
Yes, sir, you may.
As a follow-up? Again, Harry Mannerster, ten eighty-two, Kenan Road, Fortuna, Georgia. Question was asked earlier, if anything was done to look at other ways to raise taxes. And another item was brought up was the Grove that is being rolled out, two to three thousand. Two, two thousand acre development, two to three million square feet of retail space, along with about two thousand houses, estimated that the Grove is gonna break to the area. A gentleman who conducted my survey on my property also did the impact survey, my understanding, for Harris County Board of Commissioners. It's estimated that, if I'm not mistaken, that it is gonna have a huge impact to the school district in that area because of the number of houses. Taken into account also all of the homes that are being developed all throughout the county, the subdivision off Holler Road that was recently opposed. Have we looked at an impact fee for developers who are coming in and just, you know, if you look at the homes that are being developed in a lot of the, just called strips, right, where they go in bulldozes and just build the house and move on? Have we looked at impact fees of being able to assess the developers? Because those do have impacts on our county, because once the Grove, even though it is years off, once they come into fruition, we're gonna have to pay for schools, we're gonna have to pay for everything else that these new subdivisions are, are bearing on our county.
Yes, sir, that's, it's part of the services. We have to provide services as, as part of growth. Have we looked at impact fees? We discussed it several years ago.
Ten, about twelve years ago.
It was problematic at the time, but I will also tell you that when a developer does come in for a subdivision, they put in the streets, they put in the water, that's not county expense. So, impact fee in a way is our development cost, whatever, but they do pay for those items, and they have to do them to county standards, so...
Agreed, and then the county has to maintain them thereafter.
And then we do have to maintain.
So, but what about the impact to the schools? Because again, the largest portion of our taxes is the schools, and that may have been addressed many more times.
Yes.
If, if developments are coming in that are gonna double the size of a school district in a given region, what is being offset through an impact fee for what we're gonna have to pay for to build the schools, to support those students?
I'm gonna ask, put Ms. Andrews on the spot, the primary school superintendent, superintendent.
You earn your money from the state per student, so as the number of students increase, your money increases from the state. But certainly that doesn't pay for the total cost of the facilities and all of that. So we were involved as a school board ten years ago when we talked about impact fees, and that's certainly something that I think when large developments like the Grove come into play, that, that conversation needs to be held in to see what the impact is of that. But, you know, the Grove will be built in phases whenever it is built. And so hopefully, the school district will be able to absorb that growth in those phases as it comes in. But they will get more money because they earn money per student from the state.
What we're seeing, though, is larger, you know, larger tracts. You know, a lot of the developments that we saw was two acre minimums, right? That's the reason for it, to try and slow down the growth on the individuals. But now what I'm beginning to see is seventy acre tracts, hundred acre tracts, larger developments that are gonna have a faster impact on the school district than one or two individuals building on private land and smaller one offs.
And I'm sure impact fees will be a topic of conversation as we begin to grow more and more. Growth has slowed way down in the county in the last several years, but as that continues, I'm sure that topic will come back to the table.
Very valid point. Thank you for raising it. The school board pays, does pay attention to what we do and, and as far as new subdivisions and whatnot. And we do have a, certainly with their superintendent, we have conversations with him to make sure that he's aware of those things, as well as where we are, say, like the business park where taxes have, are out here at West Point. A significant amount of taxes are gonna come in. I'm in the process right now of providing him a schedule to show when they will, so that they can have that from there to kind of plan on their increased spending. Depends on appreciation.
Correct. I'm just saying, being proactive to go ahead and implement an impact fee for my development before the development begins and begins expanding out even further, and with other developers wanting to expand in Harris County. It is important not to look at it in a later date, but it is imperative to be proactive and to look at it as soon as possible.
I agree.
Actually, we're in the process now, and we're, they're supposed to come back up with those things shortly.
Yep, very good.
And when we talk about students, it takes in two thousand five, two thousand six, which is a different world from now. It took about five to six years to the county broke even, the county. It took twenty years as far as students before the county broke even, the school system broke even. I'm sure that figure stretched something than that.
And the more that comes in, the more you stretch it, the more...
So it's not that people haven't thought about it.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, Howard. All right, next speaker. Ms. Manner.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Pizaro. I live at fifty-seven Ruth E. Willard Drive in Midland.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to repeat the name again.
Rhonda Pizaro. My question is, as we grow, as Harris County grows and we get more people to move in and now all these commercial signs that I'm beginning to see, is there a plan on how big we're gonna get, how much growth are we looking for? I mean, are we gonna have like a hundred and ninety thousand people living in Harris County? And is Columbus moving into my backyard? That's my question.
Most likely.
I can't give you a definitive answer, but, but, uh, a number of years ago, I happened to serve on the Middle Chattahoochee Regional Water Council, which is looking at the uses of water coming out of Chattahoochee. And part of what we had to do was look at ways for water conservation and what the demand was gonna be. Back when that first started, which was, gosh, ten years ago, maybe?
I'm missing right, two thousand seven, two thousand...
Harris County was then at a population of around thirty thousand people. Their estimate of Harris County's population in the year twenty fifty is going to be a hundred, over a hundred thousand people. That has since been changed significantly, and we are now looking at by the year twenty fifty, a population, and it's an estimate, but of around fifty to sixty thousand people. So, yeah, that's, that's a number. Whether that's the right number or not, I don't know.
We're about thirty-three now.
Yeah, we're closing in on thirty-four, so... Yeah, it's, it's still significant growth, and it is inching up now with the number of homes. So, last year, we did a hundred and eighty? Hundred and sixty?
Hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty new single-family building permits were issued last year. Through the first seven months this year, we have issued a hundred and eighteen. So it's a little bit up, but I, you know, I have one or a small amount, so it's taking its time.
Okay, so as all this happens every year, are we going to increase the number or the acres of property? Where we end up at sixty thousand people? I know that we had increased it from one, that had a little bit over one acre, and then it went and then jumped up to two. So are we sticking to two acres for the number, for the number of years that are remaining between now and twenty fifty, or is that gonna be an increase later?
Yeah, I'm, there's no talk about it in privacy. When we went to two acres, there was actually serious talk about going to five acre now. But, but that did not get, went steady to, you know, where that goes, I don't know. Where our growth goes, that's what's projected. Is that right or wrong? We don't know that either. It is something that I, I think all of this board are aware, that certainly you can't continue as solely residential. It's just not fair. I mean, you could, but the taxes would have to increase so much so that, you know, people couldn't afford it. So, we are concerned about it. We take a look at it. We have to look at the impacts of increase, people, subdivisions. That's always a part of it, just what we can do. And as part of our consideration as, as we vote. But, you know, to tell you when and how it's gonna happen, I don't know. We, you know, a number, a number of years ago, back in two thousand four, which is when we first bought the properties at the Northwest Harris Business Park, because we felt like we needed to bring in some industrial type thing, and we also need retail. But we needed to do that again to bring in funds that would take, take the burden off of the taxation. And, yes, those are beginning to pay us some good tax money. I think now what we see, and it was part of the consideration for the Grove, is we need more retail in Harris County. Because retailer taxes and the sales taxes then go to, it's still things that people need, so it's really not an extra tax. But it's, we need to encourage that in Harris County.
But it's kind of a double-edged sword, because retail, a lot of retail businesses count rooftops.
Yeah, that's right, so then you bring in more people.
You've got more people, then you can support that grocery store, but if you don't have that meaning, you're not gonna bring them in. So it's, you know...
Yeah.
It's a double-edged sword.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I wish we could give you an answer, because if it was planned, I'd bet if we knew what the population was gonna do, but...
Oh, we'll just put a stop sign. Just say, oh, we're not, we're old.
When I was a kid, there were ten thousand people here, and I never thought it'd reach thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Pizaro.
I'd add one more question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, what do you mean?
Yeah.
You were talking about maybe hopefully funding more industry, and I was like, I'm curious, I don't know, I'm gonna buy a fair amount. Where would this go?
Well, of course, we have two business parks in Harris County. We've got the Northwest Harris Business Park out here at West Point. We bought that land, and six months later, Keaton House there, we're gonna be there. So sometimes it's nice just to be lucky. We have the Harris Hamilton Business Park, which is a smaller business park. It doesn't have, have the big, big manufacturing, but it does have some small industry. We've got one business operating there. We've got another one that is gonna start building soon, and then a third one that probably will follow it soon. So, but that's on a smaller kind of scale. And, and at that point, then, of course, we always are talking to people. But we do our best to try and bring them here where we think it's the right place.
How do you advertise? How, how, how do you go about that? How do you want your business?
Georgia Economic Development Department has, has us on, on this, on their radar. Georgia Power Company also does the same thing. We've got the Valley Partnership, Joint Development Authority, that also advertises that they go out to trade shows and whatnot, which, you know, we can't afford to do, but that's on the Columbus's doorknob. So they go out and do it, and then we, we try and establish relationships with, with folks so that they want to come in here and take a look at it. Of course, then the people that we do have here, all of them, as far as we know, are real happy that they located here, and they tell their, their folks.
You know, certainly to get out, I'm actually quoting Carl, who told me that Columbus lost in the Chamber of Commerce. We had a lot of pretty major industries. Reynolds, I mean, Reynolds, the back, Oscar Mayer, and Bill Boonie. Bill Boonie, some of their plans in Columbus, accepting someone, just to screw it to my man, I feel my brother.
I, you know, I wasn't there at the time, I don't know what they said. I can, I can assure you that those are big projects that y'all are talking about. The state gets involved in those sometimes, and then there are, you put together a package of what you will offer those companies to come in here and locate. They first of all look at, you know, the economic climate, school systems, the pay for jobs, the unemployment rate. I mean, they look at a number of things, how close it is to it, if it's important to them, either to rail lines, or to a port, or to airport. They look at all those things, and they eliminate areas, and then they get it, get it narrowed down to before we would even tell them to look. And then they would come, come to us and say, we're interested. What have you got? And then we, we talk to them, develop a relationship, and find out what, what they got in mind and we put together an offer for them.
When you got to AICAC Industries, yet to come to Harris County?
Well, I would say what, I'd love to have a Bass Pro Shop sitting right out there on the hillside.
And the folks that live out on the east side of Columbus, well, Bass Pro Shop says, you gotta donate and go ahead before we come.
Well, that's what a lot of them do. That's what a lot of the big ones do. Yes, sir. We are always looking to drive into markets, because we do advertise and publications that people would look at, and certainly we, we have that on our websites too. You ever hear of anyone that's looking to tell the college? I would. All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes. My name is Don Teller. I live in nine fifteen, ladies' old good. Harry, I know you, I know some of y'all out there. I got a question next. The slosh... The SLOSH fund, did I give you correct? It's coming, it's almost out now, but we have a vote coming up.
The current SLOSH, it was five years SLOSHed. We've had, I think this was the third, the Thursday or the fourth, five years SLOSHed. It expires the end of March two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
We plan on having it on the ballot for a continuation of that SLOSH in May of two thousand eighteen, next year. So we will be developing the items that, that we would put in there, capital, capital items that we would put in there, and they will go before the voters, but be not a new tax, but continuation of the existing.
Continuation.
Continuation.
Refresh my memory, what is that, one, one percent?
One percent, one percent.
Consider two, two digits, for my own sake, that's the most fast tax I know, okay? I told you that a long time ago. I've been a resident out here for twenty years now. I moved out Columbus, Georgia, because of what they've done with SLOSH, period. I told you that, and I will continue to say that. Spend it wisely, I know y'all got a heck of a job, period, that's all I tell you. So continue doing it, but think about the people, think of any ways that we can reduce them, put it off. I'd be great at that, that's the only thing I want to say to you.
John, do you know whether we, we're limited to the one percent? I think we are by state law.
By state law?
I think so.
You know, you gotta look at, SLOSH is a sales tax, special purpose, local option, sales tax. It applies to all sales, and there are a few exemptions, uh, you know, food or drugs and some other things. But that applies to every dime spent in this county.
That's correct.